Truly Republican, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any appointments? Mr. Martin, any specific you want to do first?
Unnecessary.
Okay. And why don't you come up, Mr. Shuloo? You're not, as you said, there was no appointments to do the participation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Joe Shuloo, 140 School Street. Just stopping in again. At the last meeting, it was mentioned that the attorney at Bacon &amp; Wilson would be sending back a responsive petition to the group. And I hadn't received one yet, so I didn't know. I don't know if a specific timeline was set, but it sounded like it was going to be something that would be fairly quickly forthcoming. But haven't received anything, so.
Well, it's been six weeks since the board requested a definition of the cease and desist order. And we have not received it yet, and I find that... Guess I put my mic on right now. Yeah, now they can hear me. Yeah. I think six weeks is way too long to get an appointment with somebody. That's my opinion. I don't know what the problem is with getting an appointment to get a definition of the cease and desist. Because how, as a board, can we make a decision on anything if we don't have the facts?
So, from my understanding of the...
At their last meeting that we had, we were looking for a response from the attorney in writing.
That is correct. And I was going to attend the meeting with Mr. Martin and the attorney, but I have not been given any date, time, location, or anything.
It was done via phone, Jay.
Oh, I didn't know.
It was done via phone.
I didn't know. So, do we have...
Because Glenn, I believe, at the last meeting said, "Have me contact."
Oh, okay.
Right. Because I wanted to make it and expedite it.
Okay, okay.
And I did talk to him last, or two weeks ago. Asked him for his letter. Haven't heard from him last week. And I'm going to get back to him again this week and find out what's going on.
So, we're going to get a definition of what the cease and desist means? That's...
I don't know what he's going to send to me. I do not know what he's going to send to me.
We had asked for whatever questions that is going to answer the questions that were being asked.
Yes.
That's what we had asked at the last meeting. If you put that in writing.
And that's the basic, what is the definition of the cease and desist order?
Is that one of the questions? There's several questions on there.
There are multiple questions in that item.
I mean, that was the big one that Mr. Shuloo's been asking for. And now we have a letter from the... Mr. Briggs, our building inspector.
That has nothing to do with his thing.
Okay, that's fine.
That was something else that the board asked for.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with Mr. Shuloo's petition.
Okay.
And I also did watch the video of the subsequent part of that meeting, the last one I attended, where you did discuss Mr. Briggs's visit. And I'm pretty sure that I have, in fact, at some point brought it to everyone's attention, formally, I believe, also in a complaint about the new 500-yard range that he observed. But just in case, nobody has a copy of those complaints, I'm having another complaint, asking him to, basically what you were asking at your board meeting, to him to define whether it's a substantial expansion or viewed as such. And if not, should it be incorporated as a continued expansion under 629? Because it's not part of... All the changes have been made since 2010, which is the substantial expansion that's being in land court. So, if he doesn't view it as a separate substantial expansion... And to answer your question, Jen, about what's substantial, the powers test determines what's substantial. There's examples of what would be considered as substantial. And the attorney felt that all the changes up there since 2010 met the powers test when he defended it before the ZBA, and the ZBA agreed that it was substantial.
You have a copy of Attorney Oil's argument?
Yeah, that was part of the petition, supporting documents of why we believe that there was some confusion over the interpretation between what the original board citation of the cease and desist and the violation covered versus what seems to have been formally or informally being interpreted that way.
Is this a copy or a new complaint?
That's a new complaint. That's something I'm submitting as of today. I don't think there was any place to date it on there. But I think Kathy will probably, you know, log it in as part of the record of the meeting here. And it's just a... It's the complaint asking him to look into that new shooting range with the picture. He did reference that he had used Google Earth, but I put in the 2017, 2018 pictures if you want to see. And I believe the forestry cutting plan that they denied was to expand that firing line, the sides of it, to open it up more.
Do you think...
That's what I... When I read the cutting plan, that's what I saw them doing. And they denied that, so that's not an issue.
Would that cutting plan they put in for be submitted post of this 500-yard range? Or...
Yeah, well, after. Yeah, they did this last spring. I brought it to...
But I mean, I haven't seen the cutting plan.
Oh, okay.
So, I don't know if it's additional cutting or existing cutting?
No, they showed it. They were cutting back. Because I think it was growing in quicker than they expected it to on the width of the original... If you look at this Google Earth photo, you can see it's not a very wide track. Or if you go out to the club's Facebook site, you can see, you know, where they've actually got shot, you know, things of shooting matches that are people shooting down that 500-yard range at the precision rifle matches.
So, on their Facebook page, that range is currently in use?
Oh, yeah, that's in use, yeah. But they're using it from the place adjacent to... They cut that so they could get out 500 yards adjacent to the lower shooting shed?
Yeah, but it's a new area.
It's a new area. It's a new... And they opened that, and I've got... Actually, last year, I believe, I gave copies of the Facebook post by Mr. Guidas, who's the director of the range, saying that they were trying to get to 600 yards, but I think they only got the 500.
So, this will be submitted in our code enforcement office, we're looking for that?
So, yes, that way, if he doesn't feel he has authority to interpret whether it's a substantial expansion, this gives him the formal complaint that will allow him to do that. So... But that's, you know, the things that I've taken from the prior video, and that he was going to be sending a letter of his interpretation. And that's going to be read publicly later. I will stick around for that as part of correspondence, if he's not going to read it now. Because I will be asking for a copy of that.
But this is a new complaint?
This is a new complaint. This is just specifically about the new 500-yard range, whether it's, you know, and it's since the... I clarified it since the 2017 sighting of the violation. So, I just wanted to consider whether it's a new substantial expansion, or could it be incorporated as a continuation of the expansion without permits that they've been doing since 2016?
Is there anything else you have?
No, I just didn't know if anyone had any questions on that before I left the mic.
I mean, that's his area. That's his jurisdiction.
Yeah, just in case anyone wanted any clarification on what I'd given there, so.
But that's for him to look at and decide.
That is for him to look at.
Yeah, and if he needs clarification, he can contact you.
And I do understand that that is the state statutes, but that is not the way it was last year. Even some of the complaints that I submitted went directly to the attorney, not even to Mr. Briggs. You know, so somebody didn't see it that way last year. So, I think something has changed.
I don't know. I know sometime points of last year, we didn't have... We were in like, kind of like a limbo, too, as far as code enforcement officer.
Yeah, I think this was after the code enforcement officer was there, after I had threatened that I would sue. And so, I think things were going to the lawyer, not to Mr. Briggs. But if the lawyer couldn't make decisions, then anything that I got from the lawyer on any of those complaints, obviously, were not responded to because he didn't have authority to respond to them. So, you may be seeing those again, too. But somebody may want to look into that, how that all happened last year, if that was not within state statutes of how that guidance was given, so.
Okay. I didn't see what the cutting plan was. I just did see some documentation that it was denied.
Right, yeah.
That's the documentation I saw. I never saw a copy of what the proposal was.
Yeah, I got an email from the forester saying, because I had asked him, you know, some questions.
Oh, see, I didn't even know that.
You know, about the timing of it all. You know, because I had watched the conservation committee video that you had also talked about, in that they had said... They actually said that they were logging it, but they weren't addressing it formally at their meeting. That's, you know, that's why I had concerns about whether conservation had a pine or not. I guess they had a pine individually or something, but the... And the DCR forestry denied it, so. All right. Well, I guess I'll wait for the correspondence piece and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Martin, I'll let you pick what you want to do next.
Well, you've got two for any rentals.
Okay.
2020. I have two requests or two reservations. First one is for a wedding and reception on October 3, 2020. Arriving at 8:00 a.m., departing at closing time. Number of police to be assigned, none. Liquor authorized, none at this time. Maximum number of people, 100, for the large pavilion and gazebo. October 3, 2020. Then we have East Meadow School making reservations for Wednesday, May 27, 2020, with a rain date of Thursday, May 28, 2020, for the pavilion, bathrooms, kitchen, and fields. And I believe it's just their annual field day out at the pavilion. Maximum number of people, 350. Liquor authorized, no. Arriving 8:00 a.m., departing at 2:45 p.m.
So, they're going to use the kitchen and all those facilities?
They usually do, yeah. I think they use it to make hot dogs and things of that nature.
Yeah, burgers, cheeseburgers. It's really, it's fun.
Well, my concern was the last special town meeting, that they wouldn't set up for the town. So, the town had to pay people overtime to come in.
Okay, but you need to differentiate between the district and the actual school.
Okay. So, you're saying it's the principal's responsibility, not the superintendent's?
No.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out what you mean by the two.
I'm saying we can't hold the individual schools accountable for what the district decides to do.
I don't know who decided not to set up for the special town meeting, whether it was the principal of the school, the facilities manager of the school, or the superintendent of the school. I just know Mr. Martin had to get our people which... Or put on overtime to go over there and set the chairs up. And they have people that work to 10:30 at night there on regular time.
What's your concern? How does that play into the rental to Dufrane's?
For East Meadow, which is a completely different school.
This is a school district, a school district. I mean, if they're not... I mean, I always thought the school was part of the town.
But I'm curious, what is the concern with the rental piece for Dufrane?
As far as I'm concerned, if they're going to stop billing the town for everything, we should start billing them for everything. That's clear cut, in my opinion. I mean, I think it was pretty bad that this town had to pay people overtime to come in and set up when they have people on straight time in that building. If the school is not going to be part of the town, and they're going to make the town pay additional money, then if they want to use town facilities, they can pay for them.
Don't they? They don't pay? They pay.
That's... We can waive those.
They pay $70, which is the nonprofit.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, it's not... They pay just like any other nonprofit would pay.
Well, I know a lot of times we waive stuff for nonprofits and stuff like that.
Not too often. Not too often at all that I've seen things like this.
They're paying for the use of the lights and...
Right. Right, open them the gate and stuff like that.
And they're going to clean up the kitchen and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay. If you two are happy with the two Dufrane's rental, will entertain a motion to approve them both?
We never... It usually just goes to Chris.
Yeah, you don't... Sorry, you just signed them. I'm just...
Okay.
Just tell us about them.
I know what's going on.
So, okay. The next item is, I received a letter from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. In the past, the Hampshire Council of Governments did purchasing on behalf of communities in Hampshire County and members of the Council of Governments. With the demise of the Hampshire Council of Governments as of June of this year, Franklin County, Franklin Regional Council of Governments will be taking over the billing or the procurement for various items that were done by the Hampshire Council of Government. The... Under the Hampshire County HCOG, they, as part of the bid package, required the bidders to pay an admin fee of, I believe it was, let's say here, 1.4% of what was purchased by the towns. That would pay for the cost of doing the bidding. FERCOG does not do that, and it will cost us $3,000 if we wish to participate in 2021 for them to issue bids on our behalf.
How many bids? Is it unlimited or per bid?
No, it's the cost for them to issue the bids. What we had purchased last year was coal patch, cracked ceiling, asphalt, line painting, reclamation, stone, rock, sand, gravel. We did liquid calcium, magnesium chloride, and salt. So, we purchased $462,876, which wasn't related to an admin fee revenue of $6,480 that was paid to the...
My math is correct. $3,000 is cheaper.
It's much cheaper, it's half the price.
Yeah, so what they're looking for is a signature from the board. Basically, it's that the municipality will participate in the FERCOG Highway Products and Services Bid Program for 2021 at the participation rate provided in the accompanying letter, which is the $3,000. And basically, they are requesting that the board sign it, and it be returned no later than December 11, 2019, to the procurement officer for FERCOG. So, if the board wishes to enter into this, I'll need a vote to enter, sign, and enter into the contract with FERCOG for the procurement of highway... Basically, yeah, highway type of purchases, as identified before.
I think it's a great deal if we get everything done for basically half the price we've been paying. But I just want to be sure the $3,000 is the total cost and not per each bid.
It says for communities...
Okay.
Population multiplier for communities between 5,000 and 20,000, it's $3,000.
Okay, as long as you've read it.
If we were to go above that, what is it?
Go above what?
If we...
20,000?
Yeah.
Goes to 3,200.
So, we're still paying less?
Yeah.
Huh, that's a no-brainer.
Oh, we paid much less if we weren't going out to bid. We paid much more if we're going to bid ourselves. This is a bargaining, so they go out to bid for several towns, and they get a better rate, so.
Do I do a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion that we sign to join FERCOG for procurement.
To participate in the Franklin Regional Collective Highway Products and Services Bid Program.
I'll make a motion as Chris read. So, we join them at the rate of $3,000 per year.
For fiscal year 2021.
Fiscal year 2021, which will start July 1 of 2020?
I'll second Glenn's motion.
Any more discussion on this motion? Here and none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, so that's unanimous. You want me to sign it?
All three.
All three, so, okay.
Thank you.
I also received today an proposed amendment with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for grant B MVP action grant response support consulting work. Originally, we had entered into a contract with them for submitting a MVP action grant project for the water main. And we think we're going to try and go up to 1.9 million at that point. In light of very little activity occurring and communities being able to participate in this program, we would like to apply for two programs now, two projects. One is still the water main, and another one is for the removal of the trees along the public ways to go along with $100,000 that was approved on the 28th. So, in order for them to do that, they need another $700 to prepare that project in addition to the other project. So, they're looking for a new contract in amount of $1,400.
So, $700 more than the last one, right?
Yeah, they're doubling it. $700 per project.
Yeah, and since we don't have a planner, and we don't have a grant writer, we've got to contract it out.
So, am I getting an original signature? Is this considered their original signature?
The way I interpreted Emily's email, there's a original in the mail.
So, should I wait for that one to sign that one, or should I sign this one?
I can call her tomorrow. I think she's just looking to make sure they're going to get paid, because this work all has to be in Boston by 2:00 p.m. on the 14th of November. So, we will not be...
That's 10 days.
Yeah, we will not be meeting again before this is due.
But you can authorize me to sign it.
That's right. We'll authorize you to sign it, and you can sign this one, the other one, both of them, doesn't really matter, whatever you feel.
What I would like to do is wait at least one week to see if the original comes in in the mail.
Yeah.
And if it comes in the mail, then I'll sign that one. If not, I'll sign this one in lieu of receiving an original signature.
They said that they sent the original.
That's what her email says. They sent it out.
I would just call and verify that they did send out the original, so you're not kind of sitting there waiting for it and...
I'll take the action.
Never shows up.
Call Emily, because I can send her an email right here, because it's right here, the email.
But it's going to be going to Chris, so why don't you have Chris make the phone call? The communication.
I was just trying to take the load off of him, but if he wants to do it, he can call us. I mean, just take a simple email, hey, Emily.
But you can have a conversation with that person, and you can verify, yes, it's mailed out, you know it's not.
That's fine. So, we need a motion because of December, just a direction?
Yeah, that's all. Because you originally had me sign the original, so. Just letting the board know that there's a change.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Okay. The next item, I'm going to let Jay explain, because he's the one who attended it. I gave you a packet of material. One from the Economic Development Administration Public Works Program, one from the USDA Rural Development. It is a second one from the Rural Development. And then, another one regarding interest rate changes for water and waste disposal loans, and then community programs, community facilities, and water and waste communities. So, why don't you go ahead, Jay, because you're the one who attended the meeting?
Yeah, no problem.
And you can give more information than I could on that one.
In the Reader's Digest format, there was a meeting in Whately, the town hall, last Friday. We had state politicians, both senators and state representatives. There was also a representative there from Congressman Neal's office. There was a representative there from Senator Markey's office. And the whole forum was geared toward rural towns that either don't have or need improvements on water and sewer projects that have a low tax base.
Was any of our reps there from our area?
From our area...
They represent...
Dan Carey was there.
Good.
Dan Carey was there. Joe Comafid, who's not our senator, but the Franklin County senator, was there.
So, someone from this area.
Yeah, our local reps there, but also our reps, Congressman Neal and Senator Markey had reps there as well.
Oh, good, okay.
There was also people there from the EPA, the USDA, Massachusetts Department of Energy Environmental Protection. They had a whole slew of people there. And the bottom line is, they've identified the fact, particularly in Western Mass, on the high list of problems or issues with small communities like ours, is the infrastructure for water and sewer. And right now, they want to move forward with it under Chapter 504, which is the Small Business Administration. Like on this proposed project we're going out here, they would issue small business loans at a very low interest rate for a very long period of time, somebody hook up so they wouldn't be overtaxed. There was also something from Mass DEP, and Kathy Fournier, who I had a brief conversation with today, there is possibly something for all the homeowners as well.
Pertaining to the tie-in?
Pertaining to the tie-in. I don't have all the details yet. I say this meeting just happened last Friday. I got an extra set of handouts, so we could all have them. But... Go ahead.
But I'd love to hear from South Hadley and get a commitment from them that they're going to bring the water to us.
That's the next letter I want to discuss.
Yeah, it was in the reading package.
Did you have a chance to see this letter?
No, because then I would have asked about it.
Just make sure you give it back.
I got my turn to cut.
Just so you know, Glenn, I had sent a letter to Mr. Seer, asking him to send a letter of commitment. I did that before town meeting. And we just got the response dated November 1st.
And I also picked that up on Friday after I did this one. It was a busy day Friday.
You seem like you're feeling better.
I am feeling a lot better.
That's good.
Still a little hoarse, but I'm still a lot better.
So, this really is in a commitment letter, so a lot of concerns they have.
That's... Well, when Jay and I talked about it earlier today, it said a lot... That's, well, when Jay and I talked about it earlier today, it said a lot about nothing, to be honest with you.
As I read, I keep on seeing the word concern. Concerns, concerns.
Is part of the normal acquisition process until you get a firm set of requirements, you cannot make a package for an RFP. If you can't make a package for an RFP, you can't apply for the grant. We've been told by Chapel Engineering that you're going to have those ready for us for the grant that's due by 2:00 PM on 14 November so we can apply for this MVP grant, which Chris has already talked about, and also give more detail what's going in for the RFP. Under the RFP process, your request for proposal has a list of all your requirements. Now, how the contractor, like the roof on the school, they can tell you a different way they're going to do it to meet the objective, that you get a choice to pick one of the RFPs you want, not necessarily the lowest, the best one for the cost that comes in. So until we have all of those that come in, all of those questions will still be there because all we have is cost estimates because you will never get an actual price until it goes off a bit.
If I'm understanding Glenn correctly in regards to that letter, I mean, the only thing that I can say that I found heartening about it was they put an actual tie-in cost.
$2,000.
Correct.
That's what I stated before.
Which is what we had been thinking and we had been told and then...
But then actually, so it says, so I thought that was the... So if someone's property is 100 feet from the road, but someone else is 300 feet from the road, it's still $2,000?
No.
No.
It's $2,000 to put the stub.
That's right.
Stub to the property line.
Property to stub.
Right, so when, right, so when I talked about the town meeting as far as connection, the connection's not $2,000. That's just the stub to get it to where it is. So for people, people to pay on top of that is to get it from that point to inside their building or inside their house, which could be thousands of dollars.
It depends.
Potentially, yes.
Depends how far they are from the road.
Well, I just said that.
And if they find ledge or whatever.
Right, these are all real things, so that's why, that was my concern. But just going, just going back to this letter, and I really wasn't talking about money anywhere. I'm just talking about, as I said, you know, whether or not they can supply the demand of water that we're looking for, they don't know. And they also stating here, we do not want to jeopardize our agreement with MWRA. So I was just reading it and as I said, I'll bring it up again, they, this is our water supply would be coming from the town of South Hadley. And reading this, I see the word concern, 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 and then to get to like one of the last paragraphs, we will not jeopardize our agreement with MWRA. Or we cannot authorize other additional water unless other communities approve it.
And that letter only addresses Phase 1, which is up to Amherst Street, Finn's Hill area.
Well, Phase 1 starts it.
That's right. Our Phase 1. But Mass DOT's Phase 1, as far as they're concerned, is the town line to 54 West State Street. But our Phase 1, I'm saying is from the town line to Amherst Street slash Finn Hill area, whatever Mass DOT has.
I understand, but this is, this is just, again, it talks about concerns that they have, whether or not they can actually...
Not an actual commitment.
Commitment, it's not a commitment letter, it's just an informational letter, talking about some of the concerns they have. And again, to me, that's strong language, we will not jeopardize our agreement with MWRA. And again, it talks in here too about other towns where they get the water supply from, other communities must, the CVA communities must sign on to those provisions to approve it.
And on paragraph 2, they said for Phase 1, documentation of this permission has been provided by both communities.
Yes.
That's in paragraph 2, Glenn.
So the other two communities have already approved us for Phase 1, and that's Wilbham and Chickaby.
Okay, all I'm saying...
No, 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 that's meaning for Phase 1.
Phase 1. But we may not do Phase 2 and we may not do Phase 3.
That's right.
Because we haven't really made a commitment of running the line down Pleasant Street.
And again, I go back to what is the benefit to the town if we can't get past five corners? Because that's as far as we can get.
Well, still give us an industrial, business district.
But when we initially put this out in January, we knew at that time and we told everybody, South Hadley says they could get us enough water to get through Phase 1 and 2. After that, you have to go to MWRA, no ifs, ands, or buts. Either we have to do it or they have to get an allotment raised. Because if you, on the letter that says there, their allotment is 3 million gallons a day and they're currently using 2.2 million gallons a day, and they're allowing us 100,000 gallons to get through Phase 1 and 2. And that was all calculated out with Dave DeRosa, by the number of houses, the number of lots and all that stuff. And a house, they say uses 140 gallons of water per day, that's the MWRA. So Dave has already calculated out and he says 100,000 gallons would be more than enough for Phase 1 and Phase 2. Anything we do beyond that will be the people's choice, or actually beyond Phase 1 is the people's choice. Even if we do Phase 1, it's still the people's choice. Right now, we're still gathering all this data and stuff to present to the people, and we will not have a final price till after the RFP comes back with an actual price. All we have until that time is estimated cost. The same thing with the junior, senior high school building roof. When Mr. Martin went and did his figures, he came up at 1.4 million. But we never had an extra, an actual cost until the RFPs come back, came back. Now, you were under 1.4 million, right?
With the change orders we had to do, we're right about at 1.4.
Okay. So again, if you get change orders, they're going to add to it. That's why it's so important to get the requirements defined upfront. And without South Hadley giving us certain stuff, we can only do so much. And that's why we need that RFP back saying, what is this going to cost?
And when are we scheduled to get that back?
Another 220 days or something like that, Chris?
What question are you asking? Get what back, Jen?
I think she wants to know when to get the actual price.
Pricing.
That'll come whenever the bids are due under the Mass DOT project.
Right, which is 220 days from 14 September or something like that.
That was a number that was thrown out at one point.
That was thrown at us.
At one point. I don't know if that's been extended or not.
We don't, we have no way of knowing.
So that would be mid, early summer? I'm trying to do the math in my head and I'm sorry.
Well, it's about seven months. About seven months.
It's just for Phase 1, not Phase 2, just Phase 1.
That's correct. That's correct.
Early spring.
Yeah, figure, figure mid-April.
And it does say that they go on to say the main concern would be consumption at a standpoint, so that, so... So the Water Department from South Hadley, they're voicing concerns as far as consumption rates. And I mean, that, these are the people that do it for a living and they're voicing concerns about it, so I think we should, you know, pay attention to what they're saying there. So, I'm not saying we don't move forward, because I think we need to move forward and see what the bottom line is and what it's going to cost us. We've, you know, we've gone to that point, but...
It's not going to cost us anything to wait for the actual price. It's not going to cost us anything to finalize the final requirements that this comes out at. Like the, South Hadley has stated that everybody has to hook up, everybody has to decommission the wells. We have information that those requirements aren't held on South Hadley people, so our question is, why are they being held on Granby people? This is all the stuff we need to go back and forth with them.
But it's because that's what they're saying, and it's their water and they're deciding what they do. Why should they...
If it wasn't for Granby, they wouldn't have water or sewer today. And all we're trying to do...
Jay, I'm not going to speak to that, but I mean, that's, this is basically what they're saying now. And they're, they're, what they're saying is that they, they're putting the line in the waters and the water they want to be, they're not going to pay for it, and they're not, we're not a resident of South Hadley, we're Granby, we're our own town, and I see what they're saying. They're providing a service to us. They're a business. The Water District is a business.
I'm, okay, so I agree with you when they say they have, they have concerns, they have concerns, but they're actually kind of vague about their concerns.
Yes, they are.
Which is a concern.
Right, but I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read you a sentence. "The board also has concerns regarding the amount of customers that will actually tie on to the new line in order to insert circulation in the new 12-inch water main resulting in optimum water quality through the new main and to the customer." So given, I guess my, my question is, given the information that we have given them, wouldn't they be able to tell? It's their job, they're the professionals, they're the ones that do this. Shouldn't they be able to tell if the amount of people we're saying are going to tie on?
We don't know that number.
We don't know that. We tell them the amount of houses.
The amount of houses.
That's, that's the maximum number. We don't know how many are actually going to want to tie in.
That's how they want to mandate it, that they have to tie in.
That's what Mr. Seer was saying, is that they were going to require everybody to tie in. Now that's changed with the board, is we don't know how many people are going to tie in, and that's a concern of ours. So, you know, what is, what is occurring between Mr. Seer's conversation with us and now the board sending a letter saying, well, because we're not sure how many are going to tie in, when at one point we were mandated to have everybody, every lot along the way had to tie in.
Right, I agree.
Right, so I guess my confusion, sorry Glenn.
It's all right, go ahead.
I guess my confusion comes in is if, if the board was going with what we thought when it was mandatory, we had the estimate of how many people mandatorily had to tie in, wouldn't they know if we were going to exceed their capacity? Wouldn't that be logical to assume? So that shouldn't be a concern?
We supplied them with what we thought, the amount of gallons and the number of connections that were going to be required for both Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. We provided that information. Well, because it wasn't a true hydrological study and this and that, they weren't sure about the numbers.
Okay.
Okay? So, but just so the board knows, we were using 330 gallons a day as our standard for what we would need for water, not the 247 that they used. So we were trying to build in a little extra in case people wanted to water their lawns, fill their pools, have their gardens. That would give them an idea of the maximum that we would be using.
What was Dave saying? I thought they used to say like 140 gallons a day.
That's the MWRA calculation per house.
The, when, the Water District, when we met and went and met with them, they said they did so many gallons a year. When you divide it by 365, it came to 24750.
Right, remember that.
Okay? That's the issue. That's what they use when they're looking at how much the projected water uses. We use 330 to play it safe. And we still came in at, I think, like 47,000 to 50,000 gallons a day. And now it's counting every house and every business that have the proposed routes we're planning on going on.
He's exactly correct, but I say that all of this is still under negotiations, there's only estimated costs. We have no package to put out for a request for proposals, and until that is developed and sent out, it's two things. Number one, we're not going to get an actual price from a contractor, and number two, we're not going to be able, well, the RFP will let us apply for the grant, and the RFP will let us put the money, the thing out there to find the actual cost.
You know, one of the, one of the questions they had was how we're going to span the brook here along the bridge.
And that was the over, right, versus directional?
And it is our understanding from Chapel Engineering that Ty &amp; Bond, in conjunction with them, designed how it was going to span above ground versus doing directional drilling underneath it, which was required by South Hadley District 1.
Yep.
Mr. Seer does not feel that what was done is...
Sufficient.
Sufficient until he reviews the plans and he approves them.
So they told us their...
It's their water.
But, but, but Glenn, Glenn.
I hear you, I know what you're saying, but...
We did everything, we contracted with Ty &amp; Bond to dust off their hydrological model. We paid for Ty &amp; Bond to do a peer review of Chapel Engineering's work. We paid for Ty &amp; Bond to assist in how they're going to span the brook, okay? We've done everything possible because Mr. Seer hasn't seen the plans, hasn't seen this, hasn't seen that, that it hasn't been done. And that's the only problem I have, Glenn, okay? We've been going and doing everything they're saying, but because he hasn't seen it and he hasn't given his stamp of approval, not the commission, his stamp of approval.
That's my next question. Who gets final approval? Is it Mr. Seer or the commissioners?
I'm going to say it's the commission, but this board may have to go there to refute whatever Mr. Seer is saying, because if he's in their meeting and he's saying what he wants to say, they're only going based upon what he has to say, not what everybody else who's been involved with this has for knowledge of it. That's all.
And we've had everything documented?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like Chris just gave you the amounts of water based upon their thing, the last discussion, everything has been documented, everything that's been done is been above board, every request they've given us, and even new requests that spring up like three M permits.
I know that we've done...
We've done everything.
Bent over backwards to accommodate what they're asking.
We have bent over backwards, yes.
I just don't want a personality conflict to derail a project that could be beneficial to us.
As Mr. Martin says, as a board, we may have to go to the Water Commission Board to meet with them, with Mr. Seer there, and iron things out between elected officials. Mr. Seer is not, he works, he's the supervisor. He, he's like a Dave DeRosa.
Well, I can, like you said, we keep on moving forward with it and we'll find out what the actual cost is and everything for us to actually do something like that. That's already in the works, that's already taking place.
Yep.
We've already committed to that, and then we can, you know, eventually find out from South Hadley exactly what they're going to commit to us. Because obviously we're going to have to have a contract with them and everything before we can do anything. But, you know, come up with a dollar amount that is actually going to cost the town taxpayers, you know, off, I'm sure some of it will be offset by the grant, but actually what's the actual dollar amount it's going to cost the town.
Exactly.
That's all said and done, which, you know.
And...
Then we got to look at if that's, the towns will look at it and say if that's feasible, just to, how far can we get? And if, you know, at that point, South Hadley's saying this is as far as you can go, as far as water, then the towns have got to say, is it worth spending X amount of dollars to get to this point?
And if this had been done last year with the grants and the in-kind spending that we were getting, it would have been a no-brainer for $120,000 and change to do this and project.
But we can't go with...
No, we have to go with the new grant and see what they'll do. Now, Chris and I have both been in touch with Senator Luss's office, Dan Carey's office, and Mindy Dom, and they did us a letter the last time, they're doing us a letter for both MVP projects, the trees and the water project again. Because I think you got a telephone call from Joel today?
I called him back, but he didn't, he didn't get back to me.
Well, you know I saw him today, so...
Jay, how long, so say if we get approved for a grant, is there like a, you know, how we see the state keeps on kind of pushing off the construction of 202?
I talked to Maya.
How's that affect the grant?
I talked to Maya, I explained the situation that we have no control over the schedule. They were not aware of that the first time around. So when I explained to her how we're working with Mass DOT and Lieutenant Governor is aware of it, so isn't the Energy and Environmental Affairs Secretary is aware of it, she says, if you need more time, we'll give you an extension. The only condition is, if you have an open MVP grant.
We can't get a new one until...
Exactly, until that one is closed.
But we wouldn't be in danger of losing it because we couldn't use it right away?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't lose it, but we couldn't apply for another one until it's completed.
So something better came up, we'd be...
Well, if something better come up, you could...
Well, not better, but something that we could use.
If something we needed, we couldn't apply for it until this, these tasks are completed. And that's the whole purpose. People have to understand, these grants are not only competitive, they are reimbursable. That's why the people had to authorize us 1.2 million... That's why the people had to authorize us 1.2 million to borrow, just like they authorized us on Monday, the $100,000 for the trees. Well, we can take that $100,000 for the trees under the MVP program, and we can fold that into another grant to get the people of this town more money. Because under the MVP, they'll give you a max of 75%, the rest is the town. And we're just trying to invest the town's money to the maximum amount of grants we can get. But, all grants come with conditions. So, after you look at how much money you're gonna get, you're saying, can I live with these conditions?
No, I understand.
Okay. And that's the problem, is until you get all the facts in front of you, you can't really make a decision. Unfortunately, that's how the acquisition process goes. It went that way with the new school, it went that way with the roof on the junior/senior high school, and it's gonna go that way on any other major project we do.
Well, then let's get our major projects done so we can sit back and relax.
Shh, the school wants a new high school. Where are we gonna get the money for that?
One of us will hit the lottery.
And just give it to the town? Okay, are there any other questions on Mr. Martin pertaining to the MVP, the water line, the trees, South Hadley, or we wanna move on to the next subject, or we still got some unanswered questions?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Martin, we'll move on to the next one on your agenda. I, I know it, because I sat with him today, and I sat with Joel today, and I was all involved with this on Friday, so I, I know what's going on. And I, I've been in the Defense Contract Management Agency, where we always did was contract, this is a normal process. So, I'm used to it. I mean, other people may not be used to it. Myself, I'm used to it.
You also?
Yeah, might as well. We gotta get, I don't have my gen's time.
Oh, you're not gonna do it, you only got 10 minutes.
No, that didn't go back.
You sure?
It's only 8 o'clock.
Oh, okay.
It's 7:52.
We'll have to tell, have to tell Mr. Carrier to set the clocks back. At the last meeting, I read that email that I received from Mr. Briggs regarding the Granby Bull and Gun Club. The board asked me to send them a memo to determine whether they're at any violation of the zoning bylaws. I did receive his letter, and if the board has no problem, I'd like to read it for the purposes of the audience, so that they can know what the response was to our question.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great idea.
It's dated October 30th, 2019, to the Granby Select Board regarding violation to Granby bylaw special permitting process, greetings, board members. This correspondence is in response to questions concerning my site visit to the Granby Bull and Gun Club, the club, on 10/21/2019. On Friday, 10/18/2019, Granby Police responded to a call about shooting at the club. They found no police service was necessary. As zoning officer, history being what it is, I went as, went as follow-up on the following Monday. I spoke to two members who gave me permission to access the upper range. As I noted in a message to Chris Martin about my visit, it had been over a year since I had last been at the range. It appeared to me that there was a new narrow clearing that I had not seen on previous visits, which is separate from the broad general range of targets. It is about 20-plus yards wide, when markers set at intervals, I estimate it to be 500 yards in length. In reviewing the site on Google Earth, it is clearly visible in the 2018 picture, but nowhere to be seen up to and including 2017 pictures. Please see the accompanying Google Earth pictures from 2017 and 2018. The question asked of me is whether this violates Section 6.29 of Granby Special Permitting Bylaws covering changes, alterations, or expansion of uses required, requiring a special permit. There was no one using the area when I was there, so I have no proof it is a shooting range. But, the orientation of the clearing to the shooter shed leads me to assume a relationship between the two. As the 2018 picture shows, the straight, narrow clearing ends abruptly in the woods. It doesn't go to any specific destination, like a path to a shed, or meander like the other paths on the property. I'm drawn to the conclusion that its purpose is as a new shooting range for the club. As such, I find it is a violation of 6.29, since it is an expansion of use, and no special permit allowing its creation and use has been sought or issued. As far as I can determine, the penalty for transgressions of the special permitting process are fines of $100 per day. Alternate penalties such as a cease and desist would seem more appropriate, but I don't find them in the bylaws, and they would appear largely unenforceable as a partial action, as we have seen with the 1,000-yard range restrictions. Having made an official determination, feedback would be appreciated. Gregory Briggs, zoning code enforcer, zoning code officer.
So, my question is, what is he asking of us? We're the ones asking.
You can't, you can't tell him what to do.
I know, so I'm just asking, he's asking us what to do.
Right, the feedback would be appreciated, we can't give him-
Saying that there's no cease and desist in the zoning bylaws, he can issue it under Mass 48, General Law 48.
I know that.
He doesn't need to be in the bylaws, everything's covered by 48 in the zoning bylaws.
And in his position, I was presuming, since he's getting paid for it, he should know that.
That's right, and my issue is this, it has no relationship to the other cease and desist regarding the 1,000-plus yard. If he has determined that there is a violation, either he issues fines at $100 per day, or a cease and desist for the property.
Or both.
No, I don't think he would do both. And you could make as a condition of the cease and desist, that it's an enforcement, so he goes in front of the planning board and gets a determination for a special permit for this new range, as determined by him. That's, that's what I think he should do, but I'm not gonna tell him what to do, because he'll turn out, well, the town administrator told me to do this, or the board told me to do that. He can't hide behind that. He's tried to hide behind that before, and when he's, when he's addressed by it by me, oh, I never said that. And apparently, he just doesn't remember what he says sometimes.
The bottom line is-
Do your job.
Do your job, he's getting paid by the town.
That's right, do your job.
Right. So, if he can't do his job, then we have to get somebody that can. That's my personal opinion.
Well, I would agree with that opinion, but that doesn't help us with the here and now. That solves nothing here and now.
Well, I think if we had-
I mean, I don't know what he would like us to do with this letter. I like the fact that he's agreeing that it's a violation, but the fact that he's not, or has not done anything about it is-
It's concerning.
Concerning. I hate that word.
I, I don't see a problem, Chris, you are his supervisor, as you're telling him, refer to Chapter 48. Simple as that, and he can, he can look at Chapter 48 and come with a conclusion of what he's allowed to do, what not allowed to do.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I'm not gonna be put into a position, well, the town administrator told me to do this.
And we don't-
You are telling, I am telling you that you can reference 40, the Mass General Law 40-a, 48, you can look at that, and make your determination from there. Because that's what, that's, that's, we know that's the chapter that gives you authority to do what he, what he could do.
Yes.
So, that's, that's, so that's, you know, that, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, just tell him, review Chapter 48.
And comply with Chapter 48.
Well, I don't think we can tell him that he has to comply with it.
Well, if he's not complying with 48, he's not doing his job.
There's, as he's, I would, I would look into that, because there is an obligation, he's, he's bound to comply by Mass General Laws, so that would be strictly up to him to enforce them, but he gets a bye-bye on it.
Right. But, I guess what is the recourse for us if he doesn't?
That's the next question.
I just asked it, see?
That's the next question.
I'm ahead of you.
We have to get special counsel to give us grants?
Nope, 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 this one can be done by regular counsel.
Okay.
Special counsel was done because-
We didn't have it.
We had an issue with a decision made by the Board of Selectmen, that we was gonna be, that was gonna be appealed to-
The zoning board.
The Zoning Board of Appeals, and Town Council was representing the Zoning Board of Appeals. Town Council could not represent the hearing body, plus one of the-
Right.
Oh.
One of the parties being involved in the, in the grievance against the decision made by one of the parties. That's why we went with special counsel.
Because you and Chris were the only two here at the time that that was done, was it done 17 or somewhere?
That year, no, yeah.
In 2017.
Right, that makes sense, I-
That's why we went with special counsel, because Town Council couldn't represent both the Board of Selectmen.
And at that time, we didn't have a Code Enforcement Office either.
Right.
That's why this Board of Selectmen made the decision, so.
As Code Enforcement Officer.
Right, because they didn't have one.
So, but, like I said, I think it's, I think it's within your, as his supervisor, to tell him, then, you know, look at Chapter 48.
The way I look at it is very simple, he's got a set of rules and Mass General Laws that he has to follow. The town is paying him to follow those laws. He either does it, or he doesn't do it. If he doesn't do it, then it's up to town to consider appropriate action from there.
Okay, I haven't read the laws regarding that.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Being on the planning board, both of us.
It is, it is a tough law to follow.
Exhausting to even try to-
It's land.
But, I guess my question is, is, yes, we are paying him to follow the laws, but does any part of the law say that he has to take action?
Actually, I think it's 6.8 under penalties.
But, it's the last thing's followed under his discretion.
I mean, well, we've got, we've got his opinion here, so he's given us his opinion as to that it is a violation, right?
He feels it does, he's looking for a, a vehicle to do what he wants to do, and like I said, he can review Chapter, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, and read it.
But, is there anything, and again, I don't, so if you guys know them fairly well, is there anything in there that states he must take action if he does determine that there's a violation? Or is it, again, up to his discretion whether he chooses to take action?
Our local bylaws have a section that says, if you did something without a special permit, the penalty is $100 per day until said permit is obtained. Now, they could just turn around and say, well, we're not gonna pay it.
Right.
Then, you're gonna end up in court again over another issue, okay? It'll be another lawsuit.
Right.
If it is, it is.
It's what is.
Let the judge, let the judge decide, just like the judge was supposed to decide on the other one, and it was remanded back, and when it was remanded back, basically the club didn't do what they were asked to do, and they're remandation back to us.
And this, and this is with, with anything that the, the Code Enforcement Officer would try to enforce, and someone doesn't listen to what he's saying, that's, that's the avenue that goes to court. So, but I think that's what he needs-
Would you also like me to get Town Council involved in this now, at this point? Or wait?
I think we should wait.
Okay.
I think it's his job to do that, he can look at the Chapter 48, read it, come up with his decision, what he thinks is appropriate, and go from there.
Can we set a deadline for that?
We can set anything we want.
Well, I'm asking, as a group, can we set a deadline that it has to be done? I'm sorry, not are we able to, but will we?
I think we should have an answer for it by him by the next Select Board meeting, that's two weeks away. I mean, if he has any questions, and Glenn, you can, that's all we want, he's free to call the Attorney General's office anytime on any of these laws, and they'll give him free advice, because we've done it as planning board members.
Well, he can use our, the Town Council as well, because they represent the town. If he's unsure of something, needs clarification on something, that's, he's there for information.
The only thing, if he uses Town Council, he has to get permission from Mr. Martin. That way, Mr. Martin controls who goes to Town Council and who doesn't, so he knows what the budget and the money and everything else like that. In our bylaws, it says if you go to the Town Council, you got to go through the Town Administrator.
I wouldn't even, I won't even wait the two weeks, I would say by, give him a week, by next Tuesday, there should be an answer back to Mr. Martin.
Oh, I have no problem with that either, I would just say-
Response to the board.
Response to the board's gonna be-
That we can forward to the board, either through scanning it to you or by mail.
Okay, well, that's because that's what's directed towards us, the board anyways, right?
He wanted to know if he, I wanted it directed to me, I says, no, it should be directed to the board.
So, we're gonna request that he submit his response pertaining to?
What avenue he's gonna take. In accordance with the, with the town bylaws and Mass General Law, Chapter 48.
Avenue taken, okay. I just wanna make sure that I-
He's asking the board for information.
Asking you for feedback.
Feedback.
Well, here's your feedback, here's your feedback.
Look at the law, and based on that, what is the law allowing you to do, what actions are you gonna take?
Or if you need assistance, please contact Town Council for advice.
What is the, so you said, you thought a week, Glenn?
Well, that'll be the 12th.
Thank you, because I can't do the math.
Because the 11th is a holiday, we won't be here.
Oh, we won't be here?
Yeah, that's my, that's my cynic Tuesday, I don't wanna wait too long, I think. A week's time is, he's been there, he's done all that, and-
11, 12.
And you hope he has an understanding of what Chapter 48 is, and look at that.
I think that's appropriate.
I have no problem with that at all, the only reason I said two weeks, I know we're not meeting for two weeks, and I know they have problems with us sending emails out and creating quarrels with the open meeting law, but sooner is better, as far as I'm concerned.
Like I said, what I would probably do is copy his letter and mail it to each of the board members.
Individually.
Individually.
Or you can read it prior to the next meeting, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
And at least hopefully put this to bed, once and for all.
Wow, this section of it, you're funny.
You have high hopes, don't you?
I have a lot of high hopes.
That is, that is good as me getting us out of here at 9, right?
You got a question, Mr. Shul?
If, if possible, since my complaint is addressed, and I ask for a written response to say the work's over, would I prefer to draw a complaint?
If you'd like to withdraw the complaint, that's entirely-
I'll leave it up to you.
I prefer it.
I prefer it on file.
We're gonna keep it on file.
On camera, withdraw the request for a written response.
We're gonna keep it on file.
I'm just saying, I withdraw the request at the end of that, the written response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna note it on here, withdrawn for tonight's meeting.
Do you want to keep this as a copy, written on it, because that's his signature on this thing?
No, because this was-
You got the complaint, that's just the, like, to speak, the complaint.
So, what I wrote on here was that it was received at tonight's meeting, and it was John Perjo Shalup at this meeting.
I agree with that. Change your time.
Fine. I'm going by that clock over there.
Don't look at that clock.
Well, that clock's wrong.
Well, I don't have my cell phone, I mean, so.
I came by having an 8:10, and you say 9:10.
Sorry. So, that's done.
That's all I have for, for now. But, we'll talk about other things as we get farther on.
Okay, so we're gonna, anybody got anything else they wanna bring up in correspondence? I don't have any particular.
I don't have anything in particular.
Has any decision been made? I did read in correspondence where the town clerk had to have her polling equipment removed from the school. What's gonna happen the next time we have voted?
Our, our personnel will have to transport it from the site it's being stored at to the school.
So, we are going back to the school to vote and for others' town?
At this point in time, that's the official voting location, will be the- At this point in time, that's the official voting location will be the high school gym.
And now will the town have to set it up?
Yep. And break it down.
Can that be changed?
To where?
The old library?
There's not enough parking.
Not enough parking there.
Seriously, it's not like we ever get an overabundance of people.
Why don't you talk to the town clerk and she'll explain it to you because.
It's just for early voting. It's just for early voting.
I know it's just for early voting.
That's everybody parks the right way.
My, the issue is, is we've been looking at trying to go at the campers club. I've suggested down here. We've looked at other spots that are town-owned and I have to go by what the town clerk desires.
Just not enough parking.
Not enough parking. Problem here will be people trying to exit out on two oh two, you know? Not like the elderly who close their eyes and just hit the gas pedal for sure where they're going. And whatever happens, happens. Uh, no, you, you would cringe many a times.
Oh, I believe it. It's, it's tough.
Yes.
Wow. Okay, so that's why I don't charge them.
We've done it at the school and it just becomes the norm. That's when people automatically think it's there.
I agree. It's where it should be, but if we're going to have issues with it.
Well, we don't have, there's no issues right now with it. I mean, I, I, and I honestly don't have a problem restoring the equipment somewhere else because if it, if it gets damaged there, then what are we supposed to do?
I would worry about damage and transport back and forth, back and forth like that.
They shouldn't, but you know, it's, you know, I don't.
Okay.
Okay, uh, that takes care of Congress. You wanna go to department reports?
Sure thing. Have you read them, Glenn?
I have.
Okay.
So in that case, I will make a motion to accept the departmental reports.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on our department reports? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Department reports, pass ayes unanimously. And we'll go on to approve and sign our maintenance warrants for FY twenty, number twenty-six, twenty-six S, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Okay, warrant number twenty-six is an accounts payable warrant dated October twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand, six hundred ten dollars and ninety-nine cents. Warrant number twenty-six S is dated ten twenty-five nineteen in the amount of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred nineteen. And what the S designates is school bills. They didn't get them into us in a timely manner to merge with our bills.
Regular warrant, okay.
So we created a special one so their bills could at least get paid.
I did have one question on these when I went.
Yeah?
In Milford, Mass, there's the Evergreen Center for Tuition for twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah.
What would we be paying tuition out there?
Special needs student, probably.
I have no idea. I was just asking a question.
Probably a special needs student.
Okay. I had no idea.
That would be the only reason I would know of us paying a tuition for out of, out of town or out of area. It could be a, an area, a business that offers specialized education.
It just seems a large amount of money.
I, when you ask certain questions, the answer you get, it's confidential and they can't reveal it to you.
According to Dessie, it says if it's not HIPAA, they can answer it.
Jay, Jay.
Yep.
I can only go by what our local people say.
Yeah.
Unless we wanna be, make a big to-do out of it, I just accept what I'm told and I move forward.
Okay.
If you wanna push to the issue, be my guest, but it's just gonna create more and more hard feelings.
I'm gonna go with the assumption that if it's falling within their budget.
Yeah.
I just said, I just said a question.
What's the account number that it goes to?
Uh, twenty-four dash three hundred dash five three two two dash one zero nine.
So basically they're using circuit breaker money, which is special needs money.
Okay.
To pay the bill. So looking at all the information that is presented, I'm gonna say it's a special needs student that's attending that facility.
Okay. You have knowledge that I didn't. I just looked at it. I saw it, Milford, Mass, that amount of money for tuition.
That's okay. Like I said, I, looking at it and since the account number, I can identify the account number very quickly for you.
Right. I know, you know, by heart. I, I don't. They seem to be doing a lot of repairs over the school too.
Such as?
I mean, you go the whole warrant. This is building repairs, building repairs.
There's a lot of things to repair in that building.
I'm not saying there's not.
Look, Jay, six months ago, you were upset because they weren't fixing stuff. Now they're fixing stuff.
I just like to know.
You can't have a.
I like to know where the money's going. I mean, these people in our town, particularly the seniors, only have so much money.
Everybody only has so much.
Everybody only has so much money.
Yeah, but when you're on fixed income, you got a lot less than other people that can work overtime.
I don't get overtime.
Wow.
A salary?
But I hear you, Jay. I hear you.
I just, you know, cause twenty-five percent of our town is sixty and over. So they're pretty much on all fixed incomes. Okay.
Well, you're assuming that. You don't know for a fact.
Go ahead.
Well, the ones I talk in here are like that.
Okay. Uh, warrant number twenty-seven is dated eleven, one of twenty nineteen. It's a payroll warrant in the amount of four hundred twenty-four thousand, five seventy-seven, forty-four. And warrant number twenty-eight is what we call the payroll maintenance warrant in the amount of ninety-four thousand, eight, eight hundred ninety-nine point four six.
Alrighty, then I will make the, I will make a motion to approve and sign maintenance warrants numbers twenty-six, twenty-six S, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight for fiscal year twenty twenty.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion on our maintenance warrants tonight? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, so that's unanimous. Gravel pits. How are we gonna sign on paperwork?
Can you multitask?
Uh, sometimes. But today's been one of those days. I'm still trying to recover from Friday.
Sorry, Glenn. I'll try to make my J's smaller on some of them.
I'd go just right over your name.
You have the same problem if I sign above yours.
I'm torn with either signing on the line or going below it.
It is getting bigger and bigger though as you said that.
And these are my copies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gracias.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is gravel permits. We have one gravel permit, renewal permit. It's for Noraki Construction, Inc., one oh five Slate Road, Chickaby, Mass. Location of the excavation site is eleven Lion Street, Granby, Mass. Uh, name of person using the site is Noraki Construction, Inc. The original permit issued, was issued in nineteen oh eight. The permit was issued when earth removal bylaws came into effect. The depth of the excavation, when the original permit was granted, is fifty feet. The current depth is two hundred seventy feet and above. The amount of materials that was removed from the site for the past twelve months was two thousand cubic yards. The amount expected to be removed in the next twelve months, which would be July of twenty nineteen to June of twenty twenty, five thousand cubic yard. And have you worked this gravel pit within the last twelve months? Yes. The approved, the permit renewal has been approved by the Conservation Commission dated ten twenty-two nineteen. And this now requires either an approval, disapproval by the select board.
Almost doubling. They're doubling, doubling, yes.
Mm-hmm.
What they're removing from last year?
That's anticipated. Of course you go high. Cause you expect, you wanna, you wanna sell a lot of stuff. A lot of, a lot of construction's gonna occur. All the other good stuff that goes along, even though I think that's a, an item that is probably overstated in light of what the economy is projected to do next year.
Cause I'm, I'm just wondering what they asked for the previous year. They probably asked almost the same thing as probably the previous year too.
Yeah, that was my question. Would they ask for the previous year?
They probably did. It's just, just a point where you said like.
Just give a standard?
Be on the high end and then the low end.
Yeah. You, you hate to ask for two thousand, then find you have a need for five thousand when you've already been permitted to give two thousand.
Yeah, that makes sense, definitely.
What is the total depth of that place?
Two hundred and seventy.
Two seventy. That's from nineteen oh eight to now.
I know. I'm just thinking of Granby, one-third water. How much they gonna go before they get one?
It must be in the high spot in Lion Street.
Where on Lions is it?
Eleven Lions. So it says right there.
Thank you.
Jay, if they hit water, there's your water source.
The only question is, is it gonna be contaminated or not?
Can they hit oil instead?
Be nice.
Wouldn't it? Okay, well, does anybody else wanna look at this?
No.
No.
Okay, well, then I will make the motion to approve the gravel permit renewal for Noraki Construction, Inc., of one oh five Slate Road, Chickaby, Mass, for the location of eleven Lion Street, Granby, Mass.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on the gravel permit? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, so that's unanimous.
All right, I'll send it down for Glenn's signature first.
That's fine. You can get it on the way back. Whatever.
Well, this doesn't matter. It's, they go across.
Oh, I didn't even pay attention. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go off topic a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
You see that, uh, East Long Meadow and Long Meadow, they got some type of grant that paid for all those trash barrels they got, the trash cans they got there?
No, the only thing I saw lately was a grant for, uh, school buses for educational opportunities.
They got, they got some grant that paid for a good portion, a good portion of the, so East Long Meadow and Long Meadow combined their efforts to get new trash barrels and recycling and all that. So they have all these new trash barrels.
And based upon their population, they would get enough money to pay for those trash barrels. Cause that, that's probably the DEP grant that's awarded out on an annual basis. And basically it's based upon population size. You get so much per person and you can spend it for any type of trash or recycling related.
They're just thinking about, you know, to, to, it being.
Well, it's six thousand people. We're not gonna get very much.
No.
That's the problem.
Well, I think that's why they can, they, they combine two, the two towns together too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice maybe, town or road.
It looks nice when you see the same trash barrel out along, out the streets.
It does and it's, yeah, and they're, they're strong.
Yeah.
Heavy-duty trash barrel that doesn't blow around in the wind.
Yep.
Stuff stays in it.
Yeah, you don't see, you don't see bags along the street.
You don't see a snow cone and all that.
You don't see the bags along or you see someone with a, with an old, uh, fifty-five gallon drum out there or the tin one that are, that's been smashed to.
Dented, dismembered.
Or blown away and, you know, yeah.
The ones that you avoid as you're driving down two oh two.
You know, something like that.
Well, maybe at some point, uh, we can see if there's money available in the enterprise fund to do that.
Maybe what we'll have to do is contact Bouchet Town Law Law or somebody like that to get enough lower region or a company to get.
Kind of what they do.
What they did, yeah. Cause I mean, with the MVP and, um, being the water and sewer project they're talking about, the state is, and the federal government's talking about regionalizing. No more individual municipalities having water and sewer, particularly in the smaller groups like us, because they can't afford them.
Can't afford them.
So they're gonna regionalize them. But again, they're driving the train. We can only hop on when they allow us to.
Good, good luck with that.
I know. I'm saying, they're driving the train. I mean, what can I say?
The problem with that, Jay, is they're trying to cram regionalization down everybody's throats. And every small community wants to be in control of the program.
You're right.
That's what you run into. That's what they ran into up in the hill towns.
Yep.
Okay, they tried to do some regional stuff up there and every community wants to have total say in how the thing's gonna be run.
And as I explained to Chris earlier today, one really thing that really came to light, which I had no idea of. Monique, Gill, Ashfield, a lot of communities smaller than ours already have a section of water and sewer, paid for back in the nineteen nineties. And Chris explained to me, Granby turned it down back in the nineteen nineties. I, I didn't know that.
Oh, you weren't here then?
Well, I, we moved here in eighty-eight.
It was.
Oh, so you were a newbie.
The ones in, the one in Monique was installed back in the sixties, just so you know, just so you know. Okay? And basically what it was, it was a federal program to clean up and the federal government paid ninety-five percent of the cost. State paid two point five percent of the cost and the town had to come up with two and a half percent of the total cost.
There's people that live, have lived in Granby a long time. They, they bring that up. They, they talk about it. They missed their opportunity, missed their chance that when they wanted to bring water and food through, it wasn't gonna cost us anything.
And hopefully we're learning from past experiences.
Well, that's why we gotta stay tied to, to oh two. Without mass DOT money, without grant money, there's no way we can afford it.
No.
And again, it's for an alternate water source in town. So when we have people that have bad wells, that's what the main project is. And yes, we'd like to make revenue with it, but.
But no, because I love the water project, but it will not serve us the majority of Granby. The bad wells, they're not on this section of town.
I can reach them. We're gonna.
It won't reach ninety-five percent of us, but it will help us bring and attract business. And I get that, that'll attract revenue at some point down the road. But to say that it will help individuals with their wells is not accurate.
Well, my, when I, when I pitched it in January, if we continue going up two oh two and it's cost effective for us to do it with the state paying and DOT paying and stuff, I am so afraid with the PFAs and stuff, how about the school? What are we gonna do if our schools have septic and or water problems?
Same thing we've done before. We hauled in bottled water.
I didn't know they did that.
Yeah. I was in fourth grade.
Well, and the water would just be treatment, treatment. Uh, the PFAs, I think it's, uh, there is a way to treat it, but it's an expensive way to treat it.
Yeah, cause Wesfield's trying to get their money back from, from the federal government.
Right. And the school might be something that could tie in because it's close enough, but if you look at Deerbrook, Maximilian, um, Green Meadow, residents on there wouldn't benefit from it.
Well, see, that's one of the big problems.
We couldn't afford to run the piping down their streets.
Well, see, that's one of the things that, when I was talking to the Board of Health, only public, is this what twenty-five people or more, I believe they said it was, are required to have their water tested. Nobody else is. So if there are people in town that don't test their water, that's their own business.
Well, right. And I think a lot of them do. They've bound wells long enough. They know to either test it or treat it.
I've talked to some people that said they never had their water tested. It tastes great.
Never have.
Since they.
Sense of, so it was done.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. People have told me that before. My water tastes great. I don't have it tested for anything.
If you have bad water, it has a taste to it or a smell. If you have bad water, it has a taste to it, or a smell to it. Believe me. You, you, you know.
Oh, I know you know, but that could be bad without the smell sometimes.
It could be bad without the smell or the taste, too.
Ew, I'm never going to your house with drinks.
Bring your own water.
Bring your own water.
I'll get you a bottle of water. Tastes fine.
Okay, next subject.
A lot of people don't.
I would have thought that that was a standard around here.
No, I, I, we test ours every two years. Because I live over here, and it's not too far from Morgan Street.
Right. Oh, yeah. I'd be testing it every six months.
Yeah, I do. Well, you want me to test my water and find out it's no good, and then do a new well? Go out for $10,000? No.
In the meantime, you just all get sick.
Just to drill into some other bad water, right?
That's right.
See, that's the problem. You know, if you do another well, you don't know if you're gonna hit-
Oh, I, good or bad water. Well, if one's contaminated, you just assume the next one's gonna be, too.
Yeah, and then you, nobody will issue a mortgage to anybody to buy it. That's the bad part.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
We're gonna go affirm appointments.
That'll show up next week. You know why? Battle one.
Yep. We do have a request from the Granby Historical Commission. Currently, they have two alternates on their commission that they would like to have changed to full voting members due to the fact that they have a lack of, of five official voting members. The two members are Teresa Johnson and Ben Haley. And I don't have a problem moving them up to full commission status effective today through June 30th of 2020. I think that's when we appoint, right, Kathy? Yep. So. I just need the board to affirm the appointments.
I'll make the motion to appoint Terry Johnson, and you said Ben Haley?
Ben Haley.
As permanent voting members of the historical.
I'll second the motion.
The only discussion I'll have on that is with the people watching this, we need help on a lot of boards and committees in town. If you ever had the list and saw how many people are on so many different boards, we really need some help. With that being said, hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, have it. Trying to put out a commercial, Kathy, to get some help. Office closure.
That's what GCM is for.
That's what I thought I'd use it for. Had an opportunity to take a shot.
Office-
You still do. You still do.
Office closure is the day after Thanksgiving. Kathy and I would both like to use either personal time or vacation time to have a long weekend, and we'd like to be able to put it out on the website as soon as possible that the Selectman's Office will be closed Friday, November 29th.
I don't have any problem with that personally, but is the COA gonna be open?
They, they have, they have to decide if they want to take vacation or personal time, and then, yes, they can close at the same time.
Okay, they come under your office, as far as that goes.
But they may want, they may want to work. Who knows?
Because I, on the menu, I thought I saw a, a menu for that day when the boat came up. I looked at that, and I said, kidding me?
Were they having turkey leftovers?
No, I forget what it was, but I mean, they sent it on the boat, and I thought I saw something on the meal plan.
They, they may not have thought about it when they were putting the meal together.
Yeah, because the turkey luncheon is coming up in a week or so, a year, for seniors.
I don't know.
I think it is. I want to say the 21st on the top of my head, but I could be wrong.
So, I just want to let the board know that we'd like to have a long weekend, that weekend.
Yep. And the veterans' breakfast is this Friday?
The 8th, I think.
This Friday, I think?
Yes. That is the 9th.
The 9th?
9th.
8th, 9th?
9th.
I don't know.
8th.
They make calendars for-
The first was a Friday, so it's the 8th. I know.
The 8th.
Okay.
Somebody want to give us a motion to close the office on the day after Thanksgiving?
I'll make the motion to close the Select Board's Office on, uh, November 29th, 2019.
Okay.
Glenn's thinking about it.
We're using our, our time. It's not like we're, we're getting paid and not using our times.
I'll second the motion.
Did you want to tell them about the new employee?
No, I mean, it's called, give me, will you just stop pushing?
Can you just call the vote?
You say I push all my committees. That's why I wear as much as I have.
He wants us to stay off first before he tosses it.
Okay, any more discussion on closing the office the day after Thanksgiving? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, so that's unanimous.
You guys got it off.
Thank you. And it'll be the same for any other office if they want to use vacation or personal, not sick time.
Right.
And compensatory time.
Unless they went to Glenn's for dinner.
That's on water.
We didn't say anything about dinner tonight. We're talking about water.
And had their water.
If you have the pool water tested everywhere, that's fine.
If you're drinking out of the pool.
Well, it's chlorinated.
That'll kill everything.
That's right.
Just drop, just dump a cup of bleach down there when you get home tonight.
They actually do that.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
When you got the coli in your well from the animals.
Okay, next title.
Is the Granby Veterans' Day Program.
Do you know what that's about, Kathy?
Yes, that was-
They go, they go to The Rock on Veterans' Day at 9:00 in the morning, and we did it last year, Glenn.
Yes.
Yeah. They do it Memorial Day. The only difference is on Memorial Day, they go to the cemeteries, too. On Veterans' Day, they just do it at The Rock up at the old library.
What time is it? 9:00?
9:00. Yeah. And if the Select Board wants to have a spokesman, just like on Memorial Day, they can have a spokesman say something. Glenn did Memorial Day this year. I did them both last year.
So you want to do Veterans' Day?
No.
Okay. All right. Just asking.
I'm the newbie. I get the year free.
Okay, just asking.
I think it says it anywhere.
No, Jay said it on Memorial Day.
That was for Memorial Day.
Yeah, that was Memorial Day next year. Do you want to do it, since you did Memorial Day?
Yeah, I'd be glad, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna be there anyway, so I mean, if you-
I'll be honest.
If you end up getting a bad throat or something like that, I'll step in or something.
Bad water?
Don't drink the water.
Don't drink the water. Got bottled water right there.
Did Glenn bring it?
No, I brought it.
Filled it from his tap?
I brought it.
See, that's just purified water. Could be more things than that that comes out of my water.
How do you know that doesn't come out of, of tap somewhere?
It does. It's just purified.
Where does it come from?
There is an article in Consumer Reports on how much contamination's-
Look at the back. It's in Sexton Bottling.
Oh! Chester Hill Spring, Chester Hill, Mass., Pristine Mountain Springs, Stockbridge, Vermont, Morgan Spring, Bennington, Vermont.
Oh, man, that water's from everywhere.
Right?
They mix all the-
How many animals? Never mind.
That's the big Y.
Yep.
Spring water. It's not just purified water.
I think we've done enough on the MVP grants application.
Yeah.
I think so.
So if there's nothing else that somebody has-
No, just-
What are you asking?
Wait two seconds.
What about the new hire you talked about earlier?
I'm asking, is there anything else anybody had? Because nothing else is on the agenda.
There's, there's a couple things I want to talk about.
Okay.
Okay, it had nothing to do with all the other stuff. First item is, is we were able to find someone to be a part-time clerk in the Selectman's Office, started today. Hopefully, she'll be willing to continue on. But hopefully, get that going, get a little bit of workload off of Kathy, and start moving forward. Next step is to look for that planner slash conservation agent. That is a difficult thing to try and find a job description for. So, but that's the next step. The other item is, is for the tree lighting ceremony. We've got the lights on the tree. We've got the church reserved. I believe we have the Boy Scouts coming to decorate the tree. Number of cookies is 32 dozen, just so you know.
32 dozen?
32 dozen. Okay? And we are trying to get the whole of the school to have the band maybe come and-
I was gonna ask, have you contacted Mr. Sergeant for the band?
Is it Sergeant?
Yes.
Because Kathy called, and it started out with Mr. Sergeant, then it ended up with a Mr. Walls.
Mr. Walls is the East Meadow music teacher. Mr. Sergeant is the band director. Would you like me to ask Mr. Sergeant?
Please.
Okay.
Please.
And it's usually nice for the chair of the Selectmen to be there and pick a, someone to do the official flipping of the switch.
I'm always there anyway, so.
Okay, but usually trying to find some young-
Little one.
Some young resident who would be more than happy to assist us with the lighting of the tree.
Yeah, because last year, we had to go find the circuit breaker because there was no power outside, but we got this. We were running around.
I will have Jeremy check to make sure that there's power.
And there is a puddle on that receptacle, too, if it rains.
So who cares?
Just don't step in it.
Yeah, I want the little guy.
Hold him. Sorry.
Wear boots.
Forgive the brain blank. What day is the tree lighting?
December 1st.
Thank you.
First Sunday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I don't know what date it is.
December 1st.
Thank you.
It'd be nice if that tree grew a little quicker.
I know, it's been-
Well, I think it has a little bit of problem because there's ledge right under there. So that's the problem it's running into.
It's got nowhere to go to get the water in the tree.
Can we just get an artificial one and keep building it up?
No, no. What I would like to do at some point is maybe move this ceremony once all the memorial stuff is removed.
The bedrooms.
Behind the police department. Have it lit behind there. Up towards the rear end.
Is there a suitable tree?
No, we'll plant another tree.
But then it'll be tiny again.
We can get a seven-footer or an eight-footer.
Well, then we see it, though.
Sure we will. You can see from up there when you're driving by. Sure you can, huh?
I didn't say you can. I asked you can.
Well, when it's lit, you'd see it, yeah, I guess.
I just wondered if you could see in the back there.
My thing is, are we gonna put a menorah up, and are we gonna put other things up to celebrate the other faiths?
What about used to be old library area, out front of it? I'm just asking a question.
I don't think there's really a, a front area there.
Well, the, on the, you know, two handicapped, and there's the walkway, and then there's all that grass area towards 202, well, around there.
But you end up going down in that divot area there.
No, that's going down on the other side. I'm talking towards the west side of the side we're on. It's pretty level there.
We, as a tree lighting?
Yeah. If we, if we're gonna plant a new tree somewhere, it's how it's see it.
The reason we put it at the police station, because it's an easy walk from there to the church to meet Santa.
Right across the street.
Yeah, but the Carnegie's, no, no difference in the Carnegie. I'm just saying, it seems like a lot of flat land at the old library that could be used on the western side of the old library. Just like you're coming from Kathy Kelly Regan's, you can see all the flat land there. If we're gonna plant a new tree versus behind the safety complex, that's all I'm playing.
I'm just trying to picture it, and I can't picture a tree.
I suppose you could cut down that black walnut tree there, and then plant a Christmas tree right there.
I didn't know that would be a problem.
Black walnuts are messy.
I know they are.
Yeah, a little too much think, thought going into this. The tree's gonna take us 15 years before you put lights on it.
No, you plant, you plant an eight, or seven, eight-footer, you can put a tree in.
Haven't you ever watched Hallmark?
I have.
Hallmark Channel Christmas, just watch it.
I watch it.
I know.
Hey, I watch all three channels now.
I DVR them all, sorry.
But what if we, like, I mean, not that, but what if the town, like, bought, like, a, a tree? Like a 10-foot, 15-foot tree and-
Took it down every year, put it up?
No, just plant it. A real one.
Nah, just get one, go buy one somewhere and put it up.
And then we wouldn't have to worry about disease. I'm gonna have a tree.
I just wonder if you could buy a big tree somewhere and just put it up every year and, you know.
And they have storage bags that they're already lit. You never have to unwrap them.
You're not talking an artificial, you're talking a real tree.
No, I've got a real tree.
He's talking a real tree. Go and get a real tree every year.
Like the big city does.
No.
He wants to be like New York City.
Well, in that case, I want a skating pond.
It's fine.
Well, we can make a pond very quickly.
Yeah, right out here.
Want to give everybody ice skates?
I want to have, I want to have Central Park skating, Central Granby skating.
Yeah, won't be that big, but you can have it. It'd be nice if, if we just had like an area that was just dedicated to it, and it was like the, the focus point of it.
What about two frames?
No.
It's not close to the church, like you said, you had to get in the car and drive, but you know.
Well, unless you have Santa go to.
The pavilion, that would be cute, Santa in the pavilion.
Nah, nah, when it's cold outside. It's not cute.
You guys are like totally missing the nostalgia.
It's time about, it's about the kids being outside, being cold.
Toughen up Buttercup.
Eating those frozen cookies, it's not good for them.
Frozen cookies might be the killer, you're right.
So.
Okay.
Do you want me to look at? See, I just don't think you'd be able to find that big of a tree every year, that's my opinion, my issue in getting it here.
How much would we pay for one like that?
I don't know, that's the issue.
Well, I can tell you, last year, you know, they have the Festival of Lights.
I'm not saying we do it this year, I'm just saying maybe for future.
No, I'm just saying for the Festival of Lights up at the Kellogg Hall, we donate to that, and at the end of the season every year, I go out and buy what they have, then I just donate it over there. And sometimes there's some pretty big trees left over. I mean, you go to Home Depot and Lowe's, there's some really big.
I know, but they don't want an artificial tree, they want a real one. And I get, real trees are a lot more.
Because most artificial trees can't go outside.
I have an outdoor one, but I built mine.
How big is it?
It's about 12 feet tall.
How long would it take you to build another one?
Taking about five hours.
There we go.
Storing is the problem. It's even got a star on top.
It's just something to think about, I'm not saying we do it, it just always think it'd be a nice like focus point where, you know, that's all.
I agree with that. I think it'd be very pretty and festive.
I mean, almost across from the church, I know it's not the town's property, but if you had, if you had permission to use it or something like that, you set up a nice big, you know, 15, 20 foot tree right there.
I'm just saying, if we take down that black walnut, or that black walnut tree right there by where Aldrich Hall used to be, you can plant it right there.
That's a really big focal point. That's like dead center.
It'll be right at the top of the hill, it's at the top of the hill.
Yeah, that's dead center.
All right, that's something to think about. Take it down and get nice, we could buy actually a nice big tree to plant there.
But is the tree healthy?
I don't want to deal with black walnuts when they come down.
I don't like dealing with black walnuts either, but I don't necessarily agree with taking down a healthy tree for no reason.
We're replacing it with another healthy tree.
There is a reason.
I'm going to be voted on that, aren't I?
It would be nice because like the one at Kellogg Hall, we planted that, and then every year it grew and grew and grew.
Man, that's what's nice about that tree out front like that.
Yes, I will, I will agree with you on that.
Yeah.
Okay, but like I said, the problem we have at the public safety is ledge is so close to the.
Surface.
To the surface that just can't grow.
Can't grow. Like, that's how many years old already?
Well, that was built in 2011, the public safety complex.
Oh, yeah.
It's not that.
It's not that big.
You're lucky if it's grown six inches.
It's not big at all, it's not.
So we use the Charlie Brown Christmas tree.
I think it's real, I think it's fake.
The public safety complex this year, and why don't we?
It's not a Charlie Brown one, it has, it's nice in fall, it's fall, it just isn't tall.
That's nice, I just think.
But if we all sat around it, then it would be taller.
Okay, so then we will all sit for the lighting of the Christmas tree and look up.
So.
Okay.
Next item was talking about the next town, or next board meeting. Kathy's going to be gone for the next 10 days, and.
And the day after Thanksgiving?
And the day after Thanksgiving, yes.
Glenn's like, I didn't know about that when I approved it.
So the question is, is I probably wouldn't be scheduling a lot for the meeting, it would probably just be the basic, you know, departmental reports and maybe the maintenance warrants. And I don't know if we want to schedule a meeting and only be here for, if you're lucky, 10 minutes.
Well, if the bills need to be paid.
And I like to keep the continuity. I mean, if we're only here for 10 minutes, I'm okay with a 10 minute meeting.
So what day are we looking at?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
That's your next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. It won't be 10 minutes, but I don't have a problem with that.
Well, if you don't let Jay talk.
I wasn't going to say it. Sorry, Jay.
It's okay.
I'm just saying, you know, there'll be correspondence.
No, I think we need to continue, so if we don't, we're just going to.
We'll have a backlog.
Backlog to get to our next meeting, and that'll be twice as long.
Okay.
So I think that's fine.
Back to 6:30?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. That's it for me.
Do you want to say anything about the stuff you've got accomplished since the special town meeting as far as the stuff you told me about today and how everything's going good with the EV chargers, the sand and all that?
No.
Okay.
You can if you want.
The highway department has done a real good job getting the EV charger area established for the safety complex.
Yeah, I think that was in.
Yeah, they did a real good job up there, and they did that for the town, and so the town didn't have to hire anybody. The EV chargers are on order, and they come in, the electricians will put them in. Chris has already got the sand to be picked up, right? Sand will be picked up?
Friday.
Friday.
Hopefully it doesn't snow on Thursday.
I was going to say, just in time for the after storm.
One day late.
It'll be in time for next week's.
Day late, dollar short.
Be in time for next week's.
You know, David is talking to Northern Tree about trying to start work on some of the trees, so.
Prioritizing which of the worst ones. You come to the conclusion, if it's close to a transformer, we're going to leave it.
And let National Grid take care of it? Sounds like a plan.
If it's not near a transformer, but it's a bad over utility wires, then we'll probably prioritize them.
Well, let me ask you then, what is National Grid, what is their timeline for taking some of the things down?
None.
Right, so I would say, my thing, if it's close to transformers and stuff lines, those are things we should be taking down because those are going to create the biggest problem when they come down.
Well, the only thing is why they're looking at, there's so many trees, about 368, something like that, a number.
The concern we have is this, Glenn, the piece of equipment that Northern Tree will use to take the trees down below the wire, if it accidentally hits a wire, the, it's not insulated, it's none of that, so it becomes a safety issue. And if Northern Tree feels it's not safe enough for them to do it, they won't take it down, and our people can't take them down.
Well, if it gets.
But I'm just saying, that's, that's the only concern I would have if it.
But if it gets, I would say stay away from all of them, I'd let, if Northern Tree's saying that's, that's too risky, no or not, but I wouldn't shy away from all of them.
Oh, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, I don't know what Jay and David talked about, but.
We were talking about taking the ones down with strictly over the high tension wires over priority ones with transformers, because National Grid will go after the ones with the transformers to save themselves money, but they won't go after the ones with strictly wires.
And they'll respond quickly to a transformer.
That's correct.
They won't respond as quickly down to, for a downed wire. It's just.
It's just there's so many trees with the amount of money the town has and the time they have, there's no way, no matter what you take trees down, if there's a big wind, people are going to be.
Jay mentioned this to you, you said, I thought they were just trying to stay away from the ones that have the wires.
No, the wires is fine, just we stay away from the transformers, because National Grid won't touch them with wires, but they will touch them if they're going to.
But I also think though, if Northern Trees will only take it down, it's not a risk to them.
I would leave it up to them to make the call whether or not they can do it or not.
Yeah.
That's how I think, but if you're the house that just lost power for two, three days, you might be saying something different.
That's right, and no matter what we do with the amount of trees that are overhanging the wires, we don't have enough money and time to get them all down.
To get them all down in time.
Right, so there are going to be people that complain no matter what we do.
Oh, but like David said in the town meeting, we need to start somewhere, we're starting.
That's right.
You know, and hopefully we can start working.
The only way to stop it is to put all of our utilities underground.
And.
I know we can't.
Well, actually, it's going to change, the state is changing, you're going to find out.
Well, if they're going to pay for it, that's one thing.
Well.
No, you'll end up paying for it in your electric bill.
We'll end up paying for it eventually.
I'm going off grid.
They don't do anything but nothing. But on the next round, for Mastio Weir, resiliency is the magic word, inasmuch as the state has finally realized, you can only put so much weight on a telephone pole. With all these solar farms and stuff, the wires are beefing heavy enough, so they don't want all the solar energy anymore going to the grid. They want it to go into the exact building that's going to use it, and you get rid of the distribution charge too. And that's why we're doing a grant on the safety complex, so the fire department roof with a battery room for storage. We got a grant for that, we're working on that now.
Oh, first I've heard of it.
Yeah, well, the state, they, we have a draft copy in the energy committee, the state is supposed to publish it this month on their new things, because the poles just cannot take the weight, and they finally realize if you put, say we had a solar farm out back, it would go directly into this building, this building would use the power from its solar farm, then put it in battery storage for nighttime use or cloudy days and stuff like that.
Right.
And it doesn't go to the grid. The reason everybody goes to the grid now, that's the only way you get S-Rex, solar renewable energy fence, the state is going to allow S-Rex behind the meter, as they call it, resiliency. And once they make that change official, then more and more people will do that.
More and more people go off grid.
Off the grid, and you get rid of, and your highest cost is your distribution charge over electricity you're actually using.
That's true.
So it's possible, I know the economic development committee is looking, contacting National Grid for the village center, when they come through Route 202 there, they're putting all those wires underground, and you know, the old streetlights, we asked them to like co-oke in Northampton to put them in in the village center.
It finally gets there.
They haven't said no, but.
It's going to cost us.
Everything costs, the question is.
And the problem, the problem is, is dealing with the heat that's generated by the wires that they use the air as a cooling.
Cooling device versus the gel underground.
And that's the problem you run into. And then you're going to get the underground vault that explodes like it does in Boston, and you know, then the whole grid is down.
Yeah, and then you got the animals that get shocked for walking on the ground because there's shortage underground. But the economic development committee, being a lot of our senior citizens, thought it would be, look nicer in the village there to have it more like a country versus all these big heavyset telephone poles and wires there.
That is the country look.
Right.
The big heavyset wires.
The big heavyset wires.
Yeah, that is the country look.
Okie dokie.
Well, if you're going to make your time for nine o'clock.
Shh, come on, Chris.
I'm just saying, you've got three minutes.
Make your motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on adjourned the meeting? See everybody on the 18th, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.